Ladies and gentlemen, I call this evening's Planning Commission meeting for the city of Greer to order. If there is anyone present on the commission who would need to disqualify themselves from the cases being reviewed this evening, please state your name and case for the record and complete a recusal form from staff. Right here. At this time, the case is being heard and voted on. That person will need to step down from the panel. We're good over there. We're going to receive the minutes from last meeting, which was August 18th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Yes. May I have some motion approved?
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Toma?
Yes.
Mr. La- uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Lavender?
Yes. During this time, we'll open and close the public forum for each request. We'll start with staff giving the basic information for their request and the applicant presenting their request. Afterwards, anyone wishing to speak for or against the request will have the opportunity to do so. All speakers should come to the podium to make their comments, beginning with their name and address. If you have not already, please be sure to sign in with staff to speak. Has any- has everyone who wants to speak signed in? Yes. Okay. We ask that everyone speaks during the public forum to keep their comments under three minutes. This is to keep the meeting running smoothly and efficiently. At this time, I will open the public forum for PP 25-10. Staff, please provide us with the basic information for this request.
Thank you. PP 25-10 is a request for approval of a preliminary plat for the Stark Haven subdivision on Mayfield Road. The existing zoning is suburban neighborhood, and they are using the cluster mechanic. The housing type is single-family detached, again clustered. There will be 69 units in this, in this development. Here you can see an aerial. You may remember, a few months ago now, there was a preliminary plat that came through for the parcel just north of here. This is another development from that same developer. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak for, in favor or against this request? All right. Oh, sorry. Yes, applicant also, would you please come forward? Why don't you give us a little briefing, please, and then we'll see if any more is due.
Absolutely. My name's Michael Fess. Address is 15905 Brookway Drive. I'm representing the applicant on this project. Like Mr. Boyle says, we brought the north preliminary plat in for approval a few months ago. We actually had to go back and redesign on this one because we did a geotech study on it where we drilled a number of borings. We realized there's a lot of rock on this side of the stream. So that's why this one's been delayed, but I'm happy to answer any questions you Planning Commission may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one here to speak for or against, we'll close the public forum for PP 25-10. This time, we're going to open the public forum for RES 25-01. Staff, please provide the information about this request.
This is the five-year update to the comprehensive plan. We do have a presentation, but we are going to be giving it to you later with the new business, if that is okay with you guys. And yes, that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thank you. We'll close the public forum for RES 25-01. I feel like I'm missing... Okay. No, we're good. All right. During this time, we will open and close... I feel like I'm out of order for a second. Give me just a minute. And, okay. We're going to move on to opening the public hearing for RZ 25-10. Staff, would you please provide the basic information for this request?
Yes, sir. Thank you. RZ 25-010, or 10, is a rezoning request for one parcel on Bennett Center Drive. The existing zoning is office professional or OP. The request is to rezone to medium-density residential in order to build a residential development. Here you can see an aerial. The parcel consists of 2.378 acres. Here is the zoning map. As you can see, around it is office professional in purple and more medium-density residential in brown. Here is the future land use map showing the suburban commercial designation. And here is a photo of existing conditions. And that concludes my presentation for the public hearing.
Is the applicant here tonight? Would you like to come and talk to us about this request? Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Jared Moore. Address is 3 Mason Street in Greenville, South Carolina. Wanted to thank you for your time this evening to hear our request. I am an architect and also one of the property owners for this, for this project. I think our request is pretty straightforward. We want to go from an OP zoning to MDs for a residential development. We're still early in the design of that development, but our goal would be to build townhomes on the site. We feel that townhomes would be a good use between kind of single-family homes and commercial and the public library and kind of moving towards downtown, which is why we feel that townhomes would work well there, but we obviously need the zoning to get that process started. So happy to answer any questions that you might have about the rezone or our intended use for the land. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. For RZ 25-10, I've got Ms. Gordon. If you'd like to come to the podium to speak.
My family has lived on...
Name and address. Name and address, please.
Deborah Gordon, 304 Burgess Street.
Thank you.
My family has lived in that house for over 30 years. And building multifamily units there is just going to change the neighborhood completely. We've got a nice, quiet neighborhood right now. Ever since development has gone on, we've lost herds of deer. We've lost flocks of turkey. We're down to like three hens and a couple of toms in the area and one small family of deers. It's so close to the railroad tracks. There's a... It's just going to change everything. Those trees are our noise barrier. And we were hoping that we would get a good doctor's office or something like there on the commercial property. We want to keep our neighborhood quiet. I don't know if any of y'all have even looked at the properly, property personally, but it really will affect us in a bad way. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for RZ 25-10. This time, I'll open the public hearing for RZ 25-11. Staff, please provide the basic information for this request.
RZ 25-11 is a rezoning request for one parcel on West Arlington Avenue. The current zoning is suburban neighborhood or SN, and the request is to rezone to traditional neighborhood or TN with the intent to put a detached garage to the rear of the property closer to the side lot line than current zoning would allow for. Here you can see an aerial of the parcel. All told, it is .285 acres. Here you can see the zoning map. In beige, you see suburban neighborhood; in brown, medium-density residential; orange is traditional neighborhood; and purple is office professional. Here you can see the future land use map. It is towards the edge of the downtown future land use area. And here is a photo of the existing conditions, and that completes my presentation.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Would you like to come brief us about your request?
Good evening. Dennis Kiff, 205 West Arlington Avenue. Just trying to rezone my property to get five feet setbacks. As you can see, there's a shed right on the property line. Just would like to build a garage right where it's at. Opened. Any questions? Thanks.
Anybody here to speak for or against this item? All right. This time, we'll close the public hearing for RZ 25-11. We'll now move on to the business meeting. This is where staff will make an official recommendation on each item. If the commission has questions of the applicant, staff, or anyone in the audience that is within their right to ask such questions, the commission will vote on each request during this time. After commission has voted on your case, please contact planning and zoning staff at your convenience to move forward with next steps. You may be excused from the meeting after your case is complete. At this time, I'll open the business meeting for PP 25-10. Staff will now provide their analysis and recommendation.
Thank you. To recap, PP 25-10 is a preliminary plat approval request for a 69-unit, single-family detached cluster subdivision named Stark Haven on Mayfield Road. Here is the aerial. And here is the preliminary plat in question. Once again, this consists of 69 single-family detached units, and staff recommends approval.
The applicant would like to come forward, just in case we have a few more...
I'm a little hard here to this.
Oh, Andy. Move your mic more in front of you.
Yes, sir. Is that, is that better? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Is it one entrance and exit?
Yes, ma'am. It's very narrow up along Mayfield Road, and with the stream and the wetlands, as well as the topography, we are limited to one entrance.
This is... You said that there was another parcel, or we saw a part of this parcel, right, previously?
Correct. One just to the northeast, in the hatched area.
Okay. And that's still potentially forthcoming, but...
Yes, we're actually submitted our construction documents on that, and I, we are, we should be resubmitting the fin- the third set, hopefully the final review...
Okay.
At the end of this week.
But that being in process or progress or whatever, there's no real good secondary connection or, or good reason to connect the two of them. They're, they're independent and separate.
They're independent, they're separate, but there's also, the stream separates the two, and there's significant wetlands on either side of the stream, and it's an environmental impact we're trying to avoid by connecting them.
Excellent.
Any more discussion?
69 lots, is it going to be townhomes?
No, single-family detached.
Single-family, detached.
Correct.
Oh, I see.
I like how you've got the, not, I say you, I guess is the applicant. I like how you've broken the site plan up into type 1, type 2, type 3, different sized lots. That's convenient.
Yes, sir, and that, that is to be consistent with our cluster standards.
Mm-hmm. That's good. Any more questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion. To approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Toma?
Yes.
Ms. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Lavender?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Please contact staff for next steps. This time, I'll open a business meeting for RZ 25-10. Staff will provide their analysis and recommendation, please.
Thank you. Once again, RZ 25-10 is a rezoning request for one parcel on Bennett Center Drive. The existing zoning is office professional, and the request is to rezone to medium-density residential with the intent of putting a residential development in there. Here is the aerial of the map. It is currently forested. All told, the parcel consists of 2.378 acres. Here is the zoning map. As you can see, it is surrounded by predominantly office professional and medium-density residential zonings. The future land use map is suburban commercial. Here is a photo of existing conditions. And here is staff's analysis and recommendation. As we've already said, there, it is surrounded predominantly by medium-density and office professional zonings with railroad right-of-way to the south. The comprehensive plan is suburban commercial, which does allow for some residential uses. And because it is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding zonings, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? And would the applicant like to come back?
I don't necessarily have anything further to add, but I am happy to answer any questions. I know it's, we're just looking at a, basically a site with no design, but I am happy to answer any questions that you might have or what our intended use would be.
Existing office park, is there any restrictions or covenants on that that, that prevent it from...
Not on that parcel specifically. So that parcel is actually outside of those covenants. We had to do a pretty extensive legal review of that when we bought it, but that parcel itself is not included within the covenants of that original subdivision. There's two parcels in the overall plat when it was submitted that were not included within those covenants and restrictions, and this is one of them.
Is the other one, like, adjacent, or is it on the other side, or...
Opposite end. I don't, if, it might have it on the map.
Near it to the library?
Yes. So, opposite end of that, and it's, it's already been rezoned to another zoning from the OP. I don't know when, but...
This one, right?
No. To the far right of that screen.
Towards the immigration office, next to the immigration office?
Yeah, it's, I don't know what the street is that borders that.
Pennsylvania.
But yeah, it's, it's already, those are the two parcels that were not included in the covenants and the restrictions when this was all subdivided originally. So that was, obviously, what's, would allow the rezoning because we're not bound by those covenants.
Gotcha.
And you mentioned townhomes for this one.
Correct.
About how many are you thinking?
In the 20, 25, somewhere in that range, just depending on overall layout. We have to work with the civil engineer to make sure that we can actually make things work with the roads and the access and the stormwater. So obviously, with townhomes, we can achieve a little bit of a higher density than just single-family homes, but we would probably be in that 20-ish range, which would actually be even, I think, under the density that's allowed even with an MD zoning, but...
How large is that lot?
2.38, I believe, is acreage.
Okay.
It's about 40 max.
Say that again.
40 maximum townhomes.
For that acreage?
For that, right. That's for the, yeah. That's, that's not our intention of it.
20 acreage, not including all of the site.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, we never really, I mean, I've designed many townhome projects, and even if it says you can build 40, you can, by the time you put in roads and all the requirements, the green space, you can never achieve that. And that's not our, that's not our intention either. We don't have the intention of building a site that that, is that cramped.
With the townhomes, would there be any amenities included?
I mean, yeah. I mean, again, we're trying to figure out the design of that, but some sort of green space for, for the residents to use, whether that be some sort of playground amenity, a fire pit, a dog park, something that they could use and access. Obviously, part of our plan would be improving the road condition on the two streets, so having sidewalks that would add for better kind of connectivity from the existing neighborhood all the way over to the right-of-way and towards downtown. I mean, that would be part of our plan as well.
There's a concern concerning the environment surrounding it and being the animal populations. I don't hear any of that being addressed.
I, I do understand that, and I think, you know, with really any sort of redevelopment, you know, whether you're building an office building that's going to have parking requirements and stormwater requirements, I mean, the majority of that site is going to have to be cleared regardless. I mean, if you look at the majority of the lots that have been developed, they have some trees that kind of border the railroad, but, you know, whether we build a, I mean, we're not going to, we're not going to build a doctor's office, that's not what we do, but if somebody did, in theory, I mean, the majority of that site would still have to be cleared for grading, for all the stormwater and site work that would have to go into that. So I think, you know, regardless of what goes there, I mean, there will be a pretty significant amount of land clearing to get something to happen on that site. So it's just one of the things that would happen with any development.
You said it backs up to the railroad tracks.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
So would, you think, thinking about families and children, would there be any kind of barrier you would provide?
We would totally, yeah. We want to keep, there's actually an easement that runs back there for a sewer line. I think it's a 25-foot wide easement. And so our intention would be to keep as much of that vegetation, I mean, it's going to be advantageous for us to keep that as quiet as we can of a neighborhood. So we would maintain as much of a buffer as we could along that area of the track and with the sewer easement. We can't do any work in there anyways, so you're going to have a pretty wide buffer between the railroad tracks and where our development would start.
And you said you, you're thinking approximately 20 townhomes, but the, it does allow for up to 40? Is that what you were saying?
For the density with the acreage, I mean, there are, with a townhome product, and this is me speaking as an architect, I've designed plenty of these, you know, you're never going to be able to achieve that level of density. A townhome product is more dense than single-family homes, but when you build townhomes with all the roadways and the driveways and those kind of things, you never achieve that higher level of density in townhomes. It's just, it's not possible. And that, again, that's, our intention as property owners and me as the architect, that's not our intention of what we want to build on that site. So we're not, we're not trying to build 44, or whatever the number is, we're not trying to build that. And we'd want to build something that would, I mean, obviously, it's a, it's a different product than a single-family home, but it's residential. We feel that that would be a, it's a consistent use within that neighborhood. It's obviously, yes, more dense than a single-family home, but there'd be some improvements that would come with that development that we think would add some positive things to the neighborhood and kind of further connect it to the infrastructure that's within the city.
Will the townhomes have garages or...
I mean, that's, I, I think our desire, I mean, again, it's, it's early, but yes, our desire probably to have garage parking for those. Honestly, for me, I'd like to see them front, on the street, so you have porches that kind of line the two streets and garage parking in the rear, so we're not having like a front garage condition, so people would pull into the development, they would park in the rear. That way, the units would orient themselves toward the streets, so you could have front porches, so that it's much more characteristic of a residential neighborhood.
And I guess one of the things that has really been beginning to concern me a lot, the neighborhoods being built with very small street, where people are beginning to really park in, on the streets a lot.
Sure.
And that alone is a deterrent, particularly when you have a part of townhomes. You have children. So...
Yeah, and it's, I mean, for us, you know, if, from a, whether it's a for rent or for sale product, whatever it is, I mean, it's, it's advantageous for us to make parking as easy as possible for the residents. We don't want these things spilling over into the streets. We want to be able to make sure that people have plenty of room to park in their specific unit with their vehicles, and then also provide some sort of visitor parking as well. We know people are going to have guests, so whether we have designated visitor spots that they can park at. Also, the other thing that we do is we make the driveways a little bit wider to kind of accommodate an extra vehicle, so that when you have two people are home, your friend comes over, the visitor spots are full, you're able to kind of accommodate that on the site, and you're not having situations where people are just parking everywhere. I mean, it, as a developer of this, we want this to be a community that people want to live in and enjoy living in. I mean, if we build something that's not, obviously, that's going to hurt us in the end, so it's got to be something that works, obviously, for the community, but also for us as well.
Staff, is Burgess Street, I don't have my GIS for Greer is not working, is Burgess Street, is City Street? Burgess and Town Center are both in my question, or Bennett Center Drive?
I believe they are.
Are they both city, city inventory?
I believe they are.
Burgess, and I would hope that we could, for a project like this, acquire some additional right-of-way probably from your project to widen and make Burgess Street a better street. That's a, it looks on GIS to be very narrow, possibly 30 feet, which means either it's all paved or it's a very narrow road. And from my recollection, it's a very narrow road. So it's not a city standard street as it is.
And we'd be happy to, to work with that. Again, we're, since we're so early in our design of that, I mean, we'll get our civil team involved. I mean, I do know we want to, you know, add sidewalks and some sort of, you know, landscaping and street trees, obviously, which would be part of the development standards, but, you know, if we needed to figure out a way to, you know, shift the development to add some right-of-way to the street, we're, we're happy to do that.
When you mentioned front-facing and sidewalks, I mean, there's already a curb line on the other side, so...
Correct.
You, you go up to the right-of-way and, and put sidewalk and curb on that side, you may get a car down the road right there, and you won't be able to turn around.
Mm-hmm.
So just wanted to bring that to your attention. Do you think both are...
I'm sorry, I just checked our GIS system. Both Bennett Center Drive and Burgess Street are city-owned and maintained streets.
Okay.
And they would be required to widen frontage that's along their parcel?
On Burgess, yeah.
Um, whatever the, the city standard from the center line out. So they're half.
You're, you're half, yeah.
Yeah.
So you can make it larger?
Yes, we will. We will, we'll, we'll meet the standards definitely.
They'd be required to do half. They would be advised to do as much as they could to make it a better street.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any more questions for staff or the applicant?
That widening is required just by default without any traffic analysis or anything, just by...
Correct.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Toma?
Yes.
Ms. Medford?
No.
Mr. Lavender?
Yes. Motion passes. Please contact planning staff for next steps.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open a business meeting for RES 25-01. Staff will now provide their analysis and recommendation.
I were actually going to do RZ 25-11.
Did I miss that?
Yeah.
I'm out of order. Oh, yeah. Sorry. I recused that previous statement, and we're going to temporarily close RES 25-01 and open REZ 25-11, right?
I expect to see that in the minutes.
Right. I don't have to write the minutes. Staff will please provide their analysis on RZ 25-10, 11, excuse me.
Thank you. RZ 25-11, once again, this is a rezoning request for one parcel on West Arlington Avenue. The existing zoning suburban neighborhood, and the request is to rezone to traditional neighborhood with the intent of putting a detached garage in the backyard. Here is an aerial of the parcel. It is .285 acres. Here is the zoning. Again, it's surrounded by primarily suburban neighborhood, but also medium-density, some traditional neighborhood, and some office professional. Future land use is downtown living. Here's a photo of existing conditions. And in terms of staff analysis, as we've said, the surrounding land uses and zonings are consistent with the residential character. So again, to the north is primarily suburban neighborhood. To the east, more suburban neighborhood, as well as some traditional neighborhood and medium-density. South is pretty much the same with some office professional. Then west is some more suburban neighborhood. The comprehensive plan calls for a future land use designation of downtown living. This rezoning is consistent with that and with surrounding land uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval.
All right. Do we have any questions for staff? Would the applicant like to come forward as well?
Hello again. Just here for questions. Feel like it's a fairly straightforward project, but, but answer whatever you got.
No questions.
We have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Toma?
Yes.
Ms. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Lavender?
Yes. Motion passes. Please contact staff for next steps. At this time, we'll open the business meeting for RES 25-01. Staff, provide their analysis for this recommendation, please.
Thank you. RES 25-01 is a resolution to recommend council approval of the five-year update to our comprehensive plan. By way of introduction, as a reminder, a comprehensive plan is a strategic document that helps to outline a community's vision for its future, and this is used to help guide zoning decisions and land use policy. We update this, uh, we do a full update every ten years. Our last full update was in twenty-twenty. And then state law mandates that in the intervening, uh, five-year mark, you create a, a minor update. So, this is that minor update. We are, um, again, just trying to act in compliance with state requirements by, by passing this update to the comprehensive plan. And some topics that we cover in this comprehensive plan include some updated data and trends that we've seen in the last five years since we lasted a full update. We also make some note about progress towards the goals that we laid out in that comprehensive plan. And then we have also included a new element in this plan. State law requires ten elements to be included in the comprehensive plan. It used to be nine, however, right around the time we adopted the last comprehensive plan, they, uh, the South Carolina legislature passed a requirement that every municipality include a resilience element in their, uh, comprehensive plan. So, we are, um, we basically drafted that element and added it as an appendix to this update to kind of supplement, um, the, the last plan, which was pretty much across the finish line by the time that that requirement was, was put forth. Um, once again, so here are the, uh, ten elements that are required by state law to be included in our comprehensive plan update. We have population, economic development, natural resources, cultural resources, uh, community facilities, housing, land use, transportation, priority investment, and now, uh, resiliency. And again, resiliency is a, a larger part of this because we, we pretty much had to draft it from scratch rather than providing updates, um, to existing elements. In the comprehensive plan, we cover some unprecedented challenges that the city of Greer has faced, including the coronavirus pandemic and Hurricane Helene. We also, uh, cover some of the important developments that have occurred in the last five years, including the adoption of our U D O, uh, the adoption of impact fees last year, uh, some revamping of the city's organizational structure, um, and the announcement of the four, four Greer projects last year. Uh, to start with the population element of our comprehensive plan, uh, the city has grown substantially in the last five years. Esri estimates around forty thousand residents. Our own in-house estimates put that closer to fifty thousand. Uh, net migration has, um, really sped in the last five years as well, doubling during COVID. And as you can see in the graphic to the right, we have some changes in kind of the population characteristics and demographics. So, the median household income has, has raised significantly, as has the average number of people per household and the total population. In terms of economic development, um, the city has made significant progress strengthening its, its downtown area. There are a number of new projects coming in, um, including the four Greer, uh, parking garage, um, that is in the works. You know, we have street scape improvements, some, some new apartment complexes surrounding downtown, um, as well as the Greer Mill redevelopment. We have seen significant growth in terms of some of the major employers in our region, including BMW and the inland port, um, and the G S P airport, of course. With growing food and beverage manufacturing and, um, the Prisma Health campus expansion that we have seen recently, we also see these kind of new trends emerging in our economy. The natural resources element, um, is dominated primarily by discussions of some of the steps we've taken to manage our natural resources and strengthen them. So, especially centering around stormwater management, uh, the engineering department recently completed a pilot watershed study to study the, the city's watersheds and the associated assets. They have also began, uh, using Cartograph as an asset management software, um, to help us have a better idea of where we are and where we need to go with our infrastructure. They've started putting on a number of, uh, programs and events like Rakesaw, like Robinson Day and Adopt a Stream to help kind of clean up our water resources. And then the U D O obviously has a number of, um, standards in it which are, which were intended to, uh, improve our natural resources and help strengthen things like our tree canopy. So, for instance, our tree save requirements and our tree protection and replacement plan and requirements, um, are two notable examples of that. And then, uh, a number of city departments have made a lot of really good progress, um, working with local partners, um, and, and working towards projects like the Ward's Creek and Tiger River Trails to kind of help, uh, boost access to our natural resources for our residents. Uh, cultural resources, um, we have seen a steady growth in kind of the beloved staples put on by our Parks and Recreation Department. So, things like the International Festival and the Holiday Fair and everything. We've also seen some new multicultural celebrations and some new public art. Notably, there's the Butterfly Project installation, which, uh, I believe is wrapping up or has wrapped up. And then historic preservation as well. We are working diligently, um, to increase our inventory of historic properties. And most notably recently, Greer Mill was designated as a local historic place and listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Uh, community facilities, we've seen a lot of growth here as well. So, for Parks and Recreation, we've seen renovations at Century Park and Kids Planet. Uh, we've also seen new facilities at Turner Park and Stevens Park. Pickleball expansion to kind of meet the rising demand. And then beyond kind of the Parks and Recreation, uh, aspect, we've also seen some more schools and childcare services come into the city. And also, C P W has been doing a really good job in kind of expanding their infrastructure as well. And then, of course, uh, can't go without saying, the, uh, public safety infrastructure in our, um, in our city is growing a lot. So, we acquired the Pellon Batesville Fire Station on Highway fourteen, and opened Station Forty-two on South Super Road. And then, of course, we have a couple of the four Greer projects, which are, um, kind of focusing on the community facilities aspect. Housing, we, uh, one of the most important, um, aspects and of change in this regard is, of course, the Unified Development Ordinance and its new standards. The U D O allows for a more diverse array of, of housing types, including accessory dwelling units. Um, and with that, we, we've seen kind of, um, an expansion in those sorts of housing types. In terms of housing starts, we've averaged over a thousand housing starts per year, um, with an increase in homeownership. The median value of housing is greater than the Greenville metro area. And then there is an emerging build-to-rent model as well. And then, of course, homelessness, the, the figure stands at a thirteen percent increase statewide since our last plan. Moving on to the land use element, um, with this, we are amending our future land use map, which you see there on the right. We have seen a number of annexations, as you well know, into the city in the last five years. And with that, um, we are updating the future land use map to more accurately portray, uh, the city's vision for itself and its future. As you'll see in the next slide, we have some of the circled areas that show the, the changing areas, but, um, among them are, uh, an updated vision of the residential areas south of I eighty-five, uh, bringing them away from a more denser traditional neighborhood towards a less dense suburban neighborhood. And then also, we are changing the area surrounding, um, the neighborhood center at Kissed One-O-One and Reedville Road from traditional neighborhood to suburban commercial to reflect kind of the, um, emerging center that's around that intersection. And then, uh, we've updated some areas around, uh, Wade Hampton, uh, particularly to the south of Wade Hampton, uh, moving them from suburban commercial to traditional neighborhood to reflect its more residential character. Here you can see, uh, that marked-up map. So, you can see one of the biggest changes is, again, that change to the south, um, of the city, south of I eighty-five, where we've changed the, uh, future land use designation from, uh, traditional neighborhood to suburban neighborhood. Um, we've also added a number of neighborhood corridors to our map, where we feel like there is a, a emerging, uh, pattern of, of growth in those areas. So, for instance, along South Line Street slash New Woodruff Road, North Main Street, Arlington Road, and Pennsylvania Avenue. We have recategorized the neighborhood center, um, at the intersection of South Buncombe and, uh, South Main from, uh, or to a regional center, um, to kind of reflect the fact that, well, there's a, a big Prisma Health expansion going in there as well as the city's new sports and events center. And lastly, um, we have updated, uh, some of the areas around, uh, South Buncombe Road, uh, changing them from commercial areas, um, and manufacturing logistics to suburban commercial, and then, um, also mixed employment. All right. Uh, transportation, this element obviously centers around transportation. Uh, the city of Greer has undertaken a number of studies centering around, uh, transportation recently, um, including Safe Streets for All, um, and then the ongoing Quiet Crossing Project. We've made a number of investments in our transportation infrastructure, including the roundabout at Gibbs Shoals and West Phillips Road, um, the North Main and East Point Set Road Diets, Bible Brook Bridge closure, and, uh, planned improvements at Chick Springs and South Subert Road, uh, right there near the fire station. In terms of maintenance, uh, Public Services has repaired over a thousand potholes and replaced more than five thousand linear feet of sidewalk since our last update. And then, um, our, our ninth element is, of course, uh, priority investment, which is dominated by, uh, some of the city's more recent projects, including the Grude Golf renovations, the South Highway fourteen fire station acquisition, um, and then the new fire station on South Super Road. And then, um, of course, the things on the horizon are the four Greer projects, um, which we are familiar with. Those are paid for with the adoption of impact fees last year. Last but not least, we've come to resiliency. Again, this is a newly required element in our comprehensive plan. South Carolina Office of Resilience, which was, uh, created back in, I believe, twenty-twenty, defines resiliency as the ability of communities, economies, and ecosystems within South Carolina to anticipate, uh, absorb, recover, and thrive when presented with environmental change and natural hazards. Again, all of this, uh, both the South Carolina Office of Resiliency and the requirement of the resilience element came out of the Disaster Relief and Recovery Act, which itself stemmed from a number of catastrophic storms which struck the state, um, in the last ten years or so, particularly, you know, in the Low Country and Midlands, but also, as we've seen last year with Hurricane Helene. We've seen a lot of efforts to mitigate, uh, hazards, um, be they storms, extreme heat, transportation incidents. And to that end, uh, the city has been participating in both the Greenville and Spartanburg Counties' hazard mitigation plans. And a number of our capital projects are also working to make sure that we are as resilient, um, as possible in mitigating any potential hazards that may face us. So, for instance, by investing in the public safety training, uh, facility on Hood Road, and the, the fire stations to make sure that we have, uh, well-trained and well-provisioned, um, emergency response. And again, this being a new addition to our comprehensive plan, we have been, been a bit more thorough in it, so we've included some new goals, um, and objectives in it. So, again, it's, it's primarily centering around, uh, encouraging physical resiliency, community resiliency, economic resiliency, and its, uh, environmental resiliency. Kind of taking that multifaceted approach to resiliency. And with that, I appreciate your patience and I am welcome to, I, I will stand for any questions you may have.
Because the resiliency is, is new and all that popped up is, um, as part of hazard mitigation, like the first thing that springs to mind for me is the, the amount of power outages and the length of the power outage that we had as a result of the hurricane. Is there, I was looking through the objectives in there. Is there anything that's, like, with C P W having control over an awful lot of the overhead power lines, is, you know, burial of some of those, um, in the works or a discussion as part of future plans to provide better resiliency or, uh, getting less power outages as a result of mature trees falling on and, uh, power lines or anything like that?
Sure. Um, I, I can't speak to C P W's plans exactly, um, but I believe there is a preference, uh, at least for, you know, streetlights and things of that nature for underground service. And also, kind of going out of that, I did want to mention, uh, we've recently been working with the South Carolina Office of Resilience to increase our, um, cooperation, both with other stakeholders like C P W, um, but also, you know, Greenville and Spartanburg Counties and, and, uh, other people who have a significant role to play in resilience so that, you know, we can all kind of help each other out and work together towards this goal of becoming a more resilient community.
Right.
I was kind of hoping to see the road diet on, uh, Point Set on the way into downtown. When we went from four lanes to three, we were all just like, just, let's just take the arch of power lines that's still bending over towards each other and put them on the ground. And we just repainted the roads and that was it.
Mm-hmm.
Close. We got close.
We get closer now.
Well, I was hoping for wider sidewalks as part of it too, but unfortunately, it was curb to curb.
Everything stayed. It just had a larger one lane in the middle.
It's nice paint out there.
New paint. Sewer man holes to bump into now.
I was wondering if the, um, four Greer projects that are going on the training center, would it be accessible and usable by the citizens of Greer or not?
I believe...
You know, that's a good question. I...
Not fully, from what I know of. I, I think it's going to be a, um, there's going to be a firing range that, um, the city of Greer and, if I'm not mistaken, they've been using the airports, um, facility as well, which is not an indoor firing range. So, I think, uh, G S P's, um, uh, police will end up training over here too. And then the new fire station or fire training facility will have, uh, facilities enough for them to bring in other departments and do other training. But I don't think it is a community facility.
Well, why should I pay for it?
Because they're going to be training the guys that come for you when you need them.
So, they can put the fire out at your house.
I was in a, I was in a community meeting last week for the fire department for their, uh, future planning and improvements. And I was part of that discussion, so I had, uh, some...
That was the chief you told?
Forefront knowledge of, of what it was.
I mean, you asked that question.
Right.
And then in the housing area, and I've already mentioned this, affordable homes, um... What's, any thoughts on that? Because we really don't have any more that's really truly affordable. We are increasing homes, weatherproof homes, but for those, particularly young folks, there is, you know, place they can go and, and actually, um, rent an apartment or a townhouse or even purchase a home within their salary when they get out of college or something. It just, it just don't exist. Uh, were there any discussions on it?
Um, we've definitely had discussions, um, and it is part of the goals and objectives to increase kind of the diversity of housing types, especially for missing middle, which would be more like duplexes or triplexes or quads or different, um, lot sizes to, again, sort of create some of those naturally occurring affordable housing. Um, we are actually just about to start a, um, housing needs assessment and strategy report. I think we're in the protest period for the consultant selection. Um, that'll be about a four-month process, um, and we can certainly update you on those results. It is the intention of this, of our department, planning and development, um, especially with the hiring of our new director, Alex Cahill. Um, he was specifically chosen for his, um, background in affordable housing. And so, it is a major goal of our department to build out that portfolio of both affordable housing and overall community impact. So, I don't have anything completely concrete, but it has definitely been part of the conversations and very strategic hirings and projects, um, to help meet those goals. So, I, I think staff certainly echoes your concerns, um, especially, you know, we've seen homelessness and, and arise in cost-burdened households. We've been participating with Ten at the Top. Um, it's a organization that gets the ten counties kind of at the top of our state together since we kind of share demographic and, and, um, proximity kind of challenges and opportunities. So, they've been convening a housing group over the last year. Um, so Alex and I have gone to all of those and he's actually giving, um... He's actually speaking on one of their panels next week. So, I will say that it, it does feel like baby steps sometimes, but our department has taken, um, some pretty big steps for us with our limited kind of capacity and resources towards trying to meet those goals. Um, and I think in the next few years, um, you'll see continued improvements. But I appreciate that feedback and we will certainly pass that along.
There's a, a quick note that you had too, um, while you were giving the presentation, about the accessory dwelling units. So, there are more diverse or widespread use of those. Can you provide any examples of what that's been looking like?
Uh, I, I believe the U D O is just a little bit more permissive of them than the old zoning ordinance. So, it's one of those cases where, um, it just allows more people to develop and when they so choose, whereas in the past, there were more roadblocks. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes, absolutely. So, before, um... So before, they were only allowed in one zoning district, and now they're allowed in almost all residential districts with some standards. I will say, we had hoped to see more.
Is that a public education thing, though, that if more people realized or understood that that was an option for them, that they might be able to take advantage of it?
I think it definitely could be. It's something our staff has, again, kind of thought about and had on a list to try and do maybe a webinar that explained what the standards are. We did create a new handout that's specifically about ADUs and what those standards are, so if anyone comes in and asks our permit techs, have that resource available. It's like a really nice forum with some infographics. But I agree, we could, we could stand to do some public outreach or things that could make it easier. I mean, we've talked about in other jurisdictions, some people have pre-approved design plans for ADUs, so that it's sort of a fast-track process where if you use those plans, they've already kind of been approved. Definitely some things we've talked about, but haven't quite pulled the trigger on, so.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I feel like, I feel like we approved two or three maybe the year before the UDO was approved and haven't done any since.
Yeah, so, and you'll remember, we had to do several of them as DRD, Designer View District, because they weren't allowed by.
They'd fallen in any sort of other category.
So, yeah, so I want to say we've done maybe six to eight, does that sound right? Since the UDO has been adopted, so I mean, that, compared to one or two, it actually is a big jump, but in the overall scheme of our housing stock, it's still a pretty low number.
Any more discussion or questions with staff? And I guess for the record, we are looking at this not to approve anything specifically other than your attempt to capture the, the changes over the last five years, just adequately.
Yes, it would be for the, to recommend adoption of the five-year update, and with it, the future land use map.
Right.
Is Appendix B, and Appendix A is that resiliency standalone element.
Gotcha. All right, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Toma?
Yes.
Ms. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Lavender?
Yes.
Right. Motion passes. Talk to yourselves for next steps.
There will be a public hearing, if anyone's interested, at city council, the first meeting in November, so it is not next Tuesday, it will be Tuesday, November 11.
Okay. Do we have any PAC updates?
Yes, sir, we do. We have a number of PAC updates. So this PAC update kind of rundown spans from July of this year to the middle of this PAC 2512 was for one parcel on North Main Street. The zoning was Commercial General, and the request was just to review some parking lot improvements, and that's on the corner of North Main and East Arlington, for what it's worth. The, again, it went through PAC on July 10, and the SDP is under review. Here are those plans. As you can see, the, the only real changes are to the parking area.
Are there occupants in those buildings, sir?
Yes, sir.
Both?
Yes, sir, I believe so. PAC 2513 was for one of the Prisma Health expansion projects. The existing zoning is Office Professional. This particular PAC meeting was focused primarily on the first phase of this expansion on this side of, of South Buncombe Road. It was for the construction of a new parking lot to accommodate the, the additional buildings. Went through PAC on the 10th of July, and the SDP is under review. Here you can see on the left, the, the parking lot that was at the heart of this PAC case, and then on the right, kind of the more general phasing plan, showing kind of the, the future improvements that will be planned later.
Turnabout's new, isn't it?
No.
Is that there?
That's there, it's existing.
Yes, sir.
Parking lot reflects the new UDO, so it's a significant upgrade from previous standards, and they're going to build a new facility over one of the older lots, so. Be nice. You can never go down there unless you go back to the acute center.
PAC 2514 is for 400 Lancaster Avenue. It's zoned commercial corridor. The request was to review plans for a auto service slash tire shop. Went to PAC on July 14, and both the SDP and the plan review are under review as we speak.
Is that a subdivision there? Did they carve that parcel out of the other two?
No, sir, it's, it's been like that.
Oh, is it?
But there is the plans that we saw. Again, it's, it's a auto service slash tire shop primarily.
Was it? Okay.
Popeyes and Andy's and all that stuff, that's what's left. That's the one parcel that was left.
It's just all interconnected, it's all the connectivity, so they must have all sorts of access easements.
Yes, sir, and.
It was the old back parking lot from Ryan's Steakhouse. It's just still what was left after everything else got torn down.
And in that, in the SDP review, we've been checking to make sure they have all the necessary easements and agreements and everything.
Tire store back there?
May I get your pardon?
Mechanic, you said, not tire store, but mechanic back there, an auto mechanic shop.
I believe it's, it's primarily a tire store.
Another tire store. Plenty of tires in Greer.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. PAC 2515 was located on a number of parcels at 110 Green Leaf Drive. They're all zoned suburban neighborhood, and this was a request to review the plans for the City of Greer Ward's Creek Trail. They went through PAC on July 24, and here you can see those, those plans that we reviewed. And they have not yet submitted for SDP, so the, the last thing they did was, was PAC.
You know how long the trail is?
Off the top of my head, I'm afraid I don't. Ballpark. Any idea?
This isn't the whole trail.
Yeah, this is only the first segment of it.
It's just the first part of it, right?
This is maybe what, quarter mile?
Haven't seen the plans, the total plans yet for everything.
Okay. Okay. PAC 2516 was for one parcel on West Wade Hampton, zoned commercial corridor. The request was to review plans for a healthy eating company, and they went through PAC on July 24. And for what it's worth, this is right behind Guthrie's, and these are the plans that we Questions, comments, concerns, or qualms?
One lot, but two separate users?
I believe it is technically two lots. They, they have that, you can see on the right-hand side there, the back lot is selected. Now, I believe some of the improvements that Guthrie's did, like to their parking lot, do kind of go on to this parking, this, this lot in particular. But that, that is one comment we made, is just to make sure that they have all the necessary, you know, cross-access easements and agreements and whatnot.
Yeah, so they can get there via Short Street, which is between Chili's and Guthrie's, or they have connectivity within the parking lot as well. Hard to tell without Guthrie's there on the aerial.
I can see now exactly what's going on.
PAC 2518 was for development on Bright Road. The zoning is medium-density residential. You may remember, this one was rezoned rather recently, I believe back in February. The request was for a single-family detached development, and it went through PAC at the end of August, August 28.
Wow, this has been three years in the making?
I, I will caveat this, that there were significant comments.
Yes.
From our department, engineering, and DOT. So take this with a grain of salt, because DOT would, is not allowing that many driveway cuts, and they're requiring a shared drive, so.
On which road, because they're.
Both.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if, if we see a development, it, it will look very different than this.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? Okay. PAC 2519 was for the Sutter Farms commercial parcel along South Highway 14. Again, the zoning is DRD, and they went through PAC on August 28. Here you can see those plans, it's for a strip center on that parcel.
Anything happen with them submitting beyond this? Is there any plans in the works for it or no?
We, we have not seen any SDP plans since they went through PAC.
Still nothing for that corner.
No, because we shot them down for 7:11.
PAC 2520 was for one parcel in Blue Ridge Plantation. It is for Blue Ridge Plantation Zone 6. They went through PAC at the end of August, on August 28. They submitted for a minor statement of intent revision to their plan development statement of intent on the 8th of September, and their SDP is under review. Here you can see that.
Very creative.
And again, we, we have seen submittals since then, but nothing changed dramatically at this point in time. And for what it's worth, there are 166 units shown on this plan. PAC 2521 was for the Century Park stormwater and drainage improvements. This went through PAC about a month ago on September 25. Not many improvements, but some, some added sidewalk, and again, it's, it's primarily stormwater changes more so than anything. PAC 2522 was for O'Neil Village and their commercial development. They went through PAC on September 25, and here are those plans. They include commercial space as well as self-storage facility there to the north.
Has there been any movement on that either?
No, I believe the last movement we saw was for PAC. They haven't submitted yet.
They even stopped the residential development on the other side, which they were saying was, they're going to do that before they did this, and they, they paused.
Well, they're grading over there, but.
But they stopped after that, so there was no, there's no future plans right now that they, or at least that's what they've indicated. But they're telling the residents over there at least.
Phase 6?
Yeah.
Thousand?
Yeah. It's been sitting, and the land's cleared, they got the lots prepared and everything like that, but I don't think they did any of the roadwork. I think they just stopped.
Interesting.
If there are no further questions, PAC 2523 is for the 306 East Frontage Road that you guys saw rather recently. You've rezoned it to manufacturing and logistics for the use of a lay-down yard. Again, they, they rezoned at the end of August, they went through PAC at the end of September. Here are the plans that we saw in that PAC meeting, and that was the last movement we PAC 2524 was for a AV flex facility on Brushy Creek Road. They got a special exception for a flex facility in Commercial General Zoning District on the 8th of September, and then they went through PAC on the 25th of September. Here was the submitted site plan for that. Then if there are no questions on that, I'll move on to our last PAC case on this evening's presentation. PAC 2520, 25 was for 2029 Gibbs Shoals Road, or, and a portion of that parcel. Its zoning is manufacturing logistics, and the request was to make it a light industrial park. They went through PAC on the 9th of this month. In that meeting, they talked about their, their plans for this development, and they were talking about how they were primarily interested in, in marketing to kind of contractors and others who may need warehouse space and things of that nature. Here on the left, you can see Phase 1, which was primarily what the PAC meeting centered around, but also a very rough kind of conceptual plan showing future phases there on the right. If there are no questions on that, that concludes the PAC update presentation. Thank you once again for your patience.
Thank you, Andy. We have a planning and zoning staff report.
Just call attention to the invitation on your desk for the, on your desk, bias, for the board appreciation luncheon in November. We hope to see you there, please RSVP.
Oh, y'all moved it up.
What?
So y'all moved it up, it's in November this year.
We did, we felt like we had, a lot of people say they had a lot of other holiday obligations in December, so we decided to move it up a little bit closer.
All right.
So hopefully you guys can join us.
That's where we pick up our checks, right?
Yeah. I'll be there.
And then as we discussed before the meeting, it is nearing the end of the year. Just a reminder that you have three hours of continuing ed. I will send out some updated links.
Judy.
I will say it's a lot harder to find remote links if I have a lot more interesting content that I have passwords to, so I can give you guys kind of like some different topics and, and titles, so if you're interested in doing that, then you can just let us know, and we can book you a conference room and get those started for you in the office. But we'll, we'll try to give you some updated links that you could also do remote. And that's.
Have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.